I think we're good. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us here this evening. Before we begin our city council meeting officially, I'll take a moment just to run through what's on our agenda this evening so we're all on the same page. And I will also take a moment to say thank you to Kim in the Bev Cam booth, who's got us rolling and live streaming, and so that way folks can follow us from wherever you are at attendance convenient for you, although thank you also to the folks who have joined us here in council chambers this evening. For our meeting tonight, our agenda is relatively short. We do have a presentation from our airport director, Mr. Gabriel Hanifin, who's here with us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Hanifin. We have a 7:30 posted public hearing for a national grid petition. And if there are members of the public either here or watching now, planning to come, who would like to speak in that public hearing, you can sign up on the signup sheet on the table over by that door. We will take public comment in the order that people are signed up. And then we have some routine business to take care of. We'll take a break, a brief break for some subcommittee work and come back and finish it all up. So with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, March 3, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen.
Here.
Crowley.
Here.
Feldman.
Here.
Houseman. Rattando.
Yes.
Spang.
Here.
St. Helier.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
And Flowers.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Sweeney, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sweeney. So I mentioned that our airport director, Mr. Hanifin, is here with us this evening, and we will start off with your presentation, Mr. Hanifin. I wanted to also mention that our city council budget analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry, is also here with us. And thank you, Mr. Perry, for being here. Mr. Hanifin, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I see you're at the podium, ready to go, so we will turn things over to you to be able to present. And then if there are some questions or comments from the council, I'll open things up for that.
Of course, yeah. Good evening, everyone. I think everyone knows me. I'm Gabe Hanifin, the airport manager. You know, I've been up here before you guys several times with various specific agreements and projects, looking for council approval, but in my almost two years here, I thought it might be a good idea to give you all an update, a kind of overview of everything going on at the airport. I'm also joined by the chairman of the Airport Commission, Mr. Kyle Ratalick. He's been on as chairman since January of 2024, so just about, just over a year now. So I will, so I want to start off just the summary, and then the following slides will get into kind of the details behind some of these numbers. In 2024 calendar year, we had a total of 91,614 operations. An operation is a takeoff or a landing of an aircraft. There's 112 based aircraft, the aircraft that called Beverly Airport home. In 2024, we saw a 45.45% increase in user-generated revenue. We also received just under $1.3 million in grant funds, and we received a total of 330 noise complaints. And we'll get kind of into the details of that at the end tonight. First, I want to talk about operations. They said we had 91,600 operations. That was our busiest year since 2002. First time since 2002 that we have broken 90,000 operations. This graph you see before you now is actually our, the Beverly Airport operations from 1975 until 2024. Our busiest year was actually in 1976, when we had right around 220,000 operations. And then from '76, it was a steady decrease until 2014, which was the low. And since 2014, year over year, operations have continued to increase at the airport. I don't see that trend stopping. I think that it could probably be expected that we continue to see growth in operations at the airport. What comprises those operations? Roughly 92% of those operations come from single-engine propeller-driven aircraft, 3.8% from helicopters, 3.4% from jets. Most of those single-engine aircraft, I don't have exact number on it, but anecdotally, I'd tell you, it's probably 90% of those are aircraft based at Beverly, specifically flight schools. There are two flight schools based at the Beverly Airport, and they make up the vast majority of the operations that we see. Ongoing capital projects. We did a perimeter fence replacement. We've replaced a portion of our perimeter fence. This is primarily to keep wildlife out. We noticed a large population of coyotes living on the airfield. Coyotes and aircraft tend to not mix. So we, we knew that there was a fault somewhere in our perimeter fence. And we, so we got a project 100% funded by Mast dot Aeronautics to replace a portion of our perimeter fence. We have noticed a decrease in the wildlife that we're seeing on the airfield. That was a total of $920,000 in grant funds. That fence is substantially complete. It's up. It's serving its purpose. There's just a few loose ends and punch list items that need to be taken care of. We ran out of time with winter, so we're hoping in spring that that project gets completely closed out. We also got, we are also working on an aeronautical study. This is an analysis of any obstructions, trees, power lines, buildings that are piercing the airspace of the airport. This was, is funded 90% by the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, 5% by Mast dot, and 5% local share by us. And then the environmental study we're doing includes an environmental assessment, environmental notification form, and a single environmental impact report, which was triggered by our future project, which is a total reconstruction of our main runway. Again, that's a standard funding of 90% by the FAA, 5% by Mast dot, and 5% through local funding. And so that leads us to our upcoming capital projects. The big one is coming in federal fiscal year 2027, and that is the reconstruction of our main runway, what we call runway 1634. Not only will the whole runway be getting reconstructed, but 300 feet of the safety area on either end of the runway will be paved. So an extra 600 feet of pavement on the runway. Right now, the estimated total cost of that project is $15 million. It's hard to say, of course, standing here now, how accurate that is, what $15 million looks like in 2027 compared to what it looks like now. But that will be funded in the standard breakdown, 90% by the FAA, 5% by the state, 5% by us. So that looks like an estimated $750,000 local share needed by us to, to get that project moving. And then after that, the next big one is an extension of our, one of our main taxiways. Right now, runway 16 is only accessible by one taxiway. This extension would allow access from both sides of the airport without crossing any active runway. It's an estimated like $6 million total project cost. Again, estimates aren't really good five years out, but right now, the estimated figure is $6 million, an estimated 300,000 local share. When I got here, I got here in June of 2023. I noticed that a lot of the user fees, so the fees that you pay just for using the airport, for flying your aircraft into the airport, they haven't been updated in a while. We, compared to airports in our region, tended to be pretty cheap. And so in November 2023, I increased all user fees across the board. Landing fees I increased, and we noticed from calendar year 2023 to calendar year 2024, a 9.5% increase in revenue that we got from the landing fees. Fuel flowage fee, we did the same thing and saw a 16.5% increase, 23 to 24. And then you might remember in January, we, January of 2024, we implemented a jet fuel tax. This is a local option state tax. For every gallon of jet fuel pumped, there's an associated fee determined by the state on a quarterly basis that is collected, and then all of those collections come back to the airport. In calendar year 2024, that provided us with $81,259 of new revenue that the airport had not been receiving beforehand. I, I don't think it would be out of the realm of possibility to say that we could see, you know, over $100,000 in yearly revenue off of this in years to come. So all of that, as I said at the beginning, accounts for a 45% increase in user fees in 2024. And then leases, I want to just touch real quick on leases. When I got here, I also realized that many leases had gone without the stipulated increases. Beverly's standard lease was every five years that the lease gets increased by CPI. I found that some, there were some leases that had gone six, seven-plus years and hadn't gotten an increase. So did increases on that. And then from now on, any new lease that's coming up, kind of throwing out the five-year CPI increases and trading it for an annual CPI increase. What was happening was we were getting revenue, we're getting revenue from leases, and this revenue made sense in 2021. But now I have 2025 operating expenses. And so across, you know, other airports, it's fairly standard practice to see yearly increases on leases. So that's another changeup we've made slowly, just as new leases come up and are renegotiated. But that's also been really helpful to our revenue stream. And then the big issue, as you all are well aware, has been noise at the airport. An updated noise abatement program was implemented in September 2023. Since we put that out, we have started logging and analyzing each and every noise complaint that we receive. This means we're following up with each individual that we get a complaint from. And not only are we opening up lines of communication between us and our neighbors, but we're also addressing the complaint with the necessary operator. And that's perhaps where most of the problems have lied, have been, is that operators were doing activities out of the airport, generating noise complaints, but they had no way of knowing that they were generating noise complaints. So now we're able to go directly to, say, Flight School A and say, hey, we got a noise complaint about this specific operation. Maybe think about doing it differently, or maybe think about doing it at this airport. And even though our authority really ends the moment a plane's wheels leave the ground, most of our tenants and users are very amiable to the recommendations we make. And so since we've done this, not only have we noticed a, a change in the number of complaints that we've gotten, but the whole tone of the complaints have totally changed. It's not so angry and expletive written, and it's much more someone wanting to have a conversation, ask questions. And then we're also seeing a change in who we're getting complaints about. Our flight schools, when we first started tracking this, were taking up the whole spreadsheet that I have created. Now, we're seeing flight school show up every once in a while just because they have really taken seriously being a partner with airport administration to try to change their operations where they can to make life a little bit quieter for our neighbors. When we first implemented these changes, it wasn't uncommon to be getting 65 to 100 complaints per month. And in December 2024, I received a total of five. And I think January, I was at six. So there's a noticeable decrease in the number of complaints that we're receiving month over month. So I mentioned, we received 330 complaints. First, this is kind of an idea of, in 2022, all of the noise complaints that we received fell within this polygon that you see here. So really wide swath. This was coming in kind of where we determined our noise impact area was. In 2024, here's a pinpoint of all of the noise complaints we received. So there were 35 addresses, 35 individual addresses sent in complaints. And that totaled, a total of 330 complaints over the year between those 35 addresses. Through using this data and past year's data, we've kind of gotten it down to these are the really concentrated noise impact areas. These are, of course, there's complaints we're receiving outside of these red areas, but these are the places that we noticed bunching of, you know, three, four, five houses all on the same street sending in complaints. So this is what we've, the areas that we've determined are where the noise is causing the most problem. And it really tells us a good story of our problem runways, the runways that are maybe more favorable for the neighbors. And then just for your information, these are all of the Beverly addresses. There were a total of seven addresses in Beverly that sent in noise complaints as well. So that's where we were getting our Beverly complainants. That's all I have. Do you have anything to add, Chairman?
No, I, Gabe and I have been working really hard on the noise. I came in just a month or so before Gabe and went onto the Noise Abatement Subcommittee, and then was appointed Chair of that committee and really worked hard to, to get a cohesive policy together. We outreach to the public, had them give us feedback, had live meetings that they could, we'd go through each point that each public member wanted to change and try to see if we could actually do that, and came up with a really nice plan, and everyone was on board. And it just, it seems to have worked out really well over the past year, and we're excited for 2025, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanifin and Mr. Ratalick as well. Thank you for being here. Mr. Perry, was there, well, I thought I'd invite you, and then we'll do questions. I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to offer, any insight as well?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I haven't been here in a while, so good to see you all. I'll be very brief. To refresh your memory, about two and a half years ago, information was brought to your attention about issues at the airport. And as you may recall, Councilor Houseman is not with us tonight, but I was instructed to spend some time with the airport people to take, take a look at some issues on management and other matters that were going down there based upon that. And as you recall, hopefully, most of you, I wrote a lengthy report to you folks back in May of 2023 with numerous recommendations to, for the airport to improve its operations, its finances, things of that nature. Mr. Hanifin came on board at that time. We met at that time. And I am extremely pleased to report tonight that of the eight recommendations that I suggested, he has accomplished just about all of them, including the last one, being here tonight. That was one of my recommendations, they should come once a year to you all to discuss this. Mr. Hanifin talked about the, the revenues that we did look at. As you saw, that he, he is spot on on that. We've dramatically increased our revenues there. The, the quarterly budgets that I look at for you people is stronger than I've ever seen in my tenure here. And we had some really good conversations about, six weeks ago at his office. Going over, as you saw from his slide, he needs about $750,000 of local funds to do some of his future capital projects. We came up with some nice strategies where I think it could be done within the Enterprise Fund itself over the next two or three years. The bottom line to him, Madam President, is, in my opinion, is, I'm wearing more my management analyst hat tonight. I am extremely pleased with the way that the airport is being managed today. I think Mr. Hanifin is doing a great job. The commissioners have established, are working with him in establishing goals and objectives, which I suggested to him. You know, the thing, and I did have an opportunity about a month ago to talk to the mayor. They have one more opening there on the commission. It's a mayor appointee. I mentioned that to Mayor Kay, he said he was going to try to get it right on that, so hopefully we'll get a full compliment there. But the bottom line, Madam President, members of the council, it's a lot different today than it was two and a half years ago, and you should have a lot of confidence in the operations of the Beverly Airport. I think the city of Beverly is being very well served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Counselors, I will go to Counselor Rattando, who I saw with his hand up before, and then we'll open it up further from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hanifin. Great job. Just a couple of questions. I know, as Mr. Perry alluded, there was some non-operational pieces of rentals that were concerned. One of them was the city itself, which has been since fixed. But I know there was the other piece, I think it was Wayside, maybe. Has that been looked at? I know that was one of the things that was discussed earlier.
Right. There's been some work with Wayside. They've moved some of their assets, their footprint at the airport is much smaller now. But that's not totally settled at this point. But yeah, something that's been looked at and kind of been worked on.
And then one other question. I know the jet fuel taxes come in, and I know that's been on the books for a while. There is no getting any of that money back that was passed years ago? So it's just basically what, going, starting fresh?
Starting fresh, January 1, 24, correct.
Well, that's $83,000 that you now have in the Enterprise Fund moving forward, which in essence means it's less money that may come from the city.
Yeah.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Feldman.
Thank you. I want to say that as the airport lies within Ward 5, and I was very aware with my time on council, I've been on council for about five years now. Prior to your leadership and the work of the commission, the current commission, the amount of, I can, I can verify the amount of complaints that I, and I just, I haven't even had a complaint regarding noise in a year now, at least. And it's just, I mean, that is just huge. And I'm really grateful for all of the work that you've done on this, and that's very much appreciated. And so I also, I did have a question about, I noticed that you said that there, the increase in how it's at 91,000 now, how you're expecting it to go up. I was, I was wondering if you had any indication of like what sect, of what sectors and what type of operations that you're predicting that it will go up? Like, what are we seeing? Is it more flight schools? Is it more biotech? Like, what is, what is coming in and out that you can see the increase? Do you have any information on that?
I don't have great information on the, on the who is coming in. I do suspect it's going to be still mostly flight schools and those smaller, single-engine propeller aircraft. I know we are seeing uptick in the jets that are coming in, but I think overall that increase is being driven by flight school traffic. Both flight schools here, based in Beverly, and then at surrounding airports that might come in and do a touch and go or two at Beverly before going back to their home airport.
Okay. And then one other question was, and I think it's just a clarification. When, when there was, for the improvement and some of the contributions, that there was a city contribution of 300,000, is that from, from the Enterprise Fund then? Or?
So the goal is always to rely as much on the Enterprise Fund as possible. If there's a project that the Enterprise Fund can't cover that local share, that's when the airport administration would come to the city and ask for a subsidy to help and get to that point. Our Enterprise Fund balance is looking really healthy. As Mr. Perry alluded to, I think in the, over the next year or two, we could, it's very likely that we can get to a point that we can fund all or most of those large local shares coming up. But it is not out of the possibility that I'd come up here again and ask for a subsidy.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Helier.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to applaud you, Mr. Hanifin. I think it's a very nice story, as Mr. Perry alluded to. And I think coming in and identifying these opportunities for revenue, the jet tax and the, and the lease opportunity, I think that was really smart that you did that. And I appreciate that approach, and I think that it's also paid off, it sounds like, on the noise abatement. So kudos to you, but just curious, any other projects in the works along these lines?
Not, I mean, most, at least airport projects, most of them are related to getting prepared for the FY27 runway project. All the, like you saw, environmental, the aeronautical studies permitting is going to come up. So really minor, smaller pieces to get us prepared to tackle the big reconstruction. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. I'll add my thanks as well. And wanted to just ask a little bit about environmental impacts. I know we've talked before, when the hangar expansion was, was proposed and thinking about sort of expanding capacity for operations. We talked about how, how that expansion actually might reduce the number of takeoffs and landings needed. But just curious more broadly, how you're thinking about the, the trade-offs and managing environmental impacts of what's, you know, the increase in traffic back towards where we used to be is, is positive in an economic sense and airport operations, but has that, that downside to manage too? So if you can just talk about how that's.
Of course, yeah. So, yeah, I just want to say that hangar project that you're alluding to, the corporate hangar, again, that's a privately funded, large corporate hangar. Right now, that's going through a whole environmental process with the DEP, making sure that all of those boxes are checked. And, you know, we're, I, I know the tenant is happy to go through that. We're happy, you know, that, to, you know, just to get that clarification and make sure everything is being done correctly. At this point, it wouldn't be prudent, I don't think, for the airport administration to go and bulldoze a bunch of land and say, here's where we're going to throw up a bunch of new hangars. I, I think what we're likely to see is very similar to that project, where aircraft that are already coming here and using the airport, wanting to make it their home and putting up hangars to support that. We have a, we've got a, our kind of future layout plan of where that development is going to happen. And it's all, we're very well aware and very strict with the wetlands and well clear of that. There's no places that, we try to do everything we can in that future planning to make sure that the environment and sustainability of the airport is forefront of thought. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Hanifin. Counselors, any further questions? All right. Well, thank you very much again, Mr. Hanifin, for being here. Thank you, Mr. Ratalick as well for being here, and both of you for the presentation. Mr. Perry, thank you for offering your thoughts as well. And we appreciate the work that you're doing and love the idea of having you back at least once a year to hear this. This was really helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night. That brings us just about to 7:30, and so we do have a posted public hearing for 7:30. This is on order number 68. So we'll open that now. Ms. Kent.
Order number 68, City of Beverly ordered that the city council, the City of Beverly hold a.
hold a public hearing on Monday, March 3rd, 2025, at 7:30 PM at 191 Cabot Street, 3rd Floor, Council Chambers, relative to National Grid Petition 31053718 to install underground facilities on Cabot and Hale Street. And this was in the newspaper on February 21st.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. I know we have our National Grid rep here with us, and so I'll invite you to the podium, and if there's anything you'd like to say to open this public hearing up or to offer the council by way of information.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kazadi, and I'm representing National Grid at 44 River Street. And we're positioned to install new conduits for, due to the customer upgrading their electrical service.
Thank you, Mr. Kazadi. Councillor Spang.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. It looks from the drawings like it's about 22 feet from the manhole in Hale Street to the fire station?
Yes.
Okay. And so there's nothing in Cabot Street, right?
No.
Okay. And how long do you think this would take to install?
Um, it should be one to three days. I think three days, max.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. I'm often asking about the traffic management plans, and I know just down the street, the National Grid transmission line worked really closely with the fire department to make sure that the work right by the station wasn't impacting their routes out, since they sometimes go right from the station down Hale Street. We just want to make sure that that's discussed and that there's an alternate plan for any days that there's work in the street.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Councillor. Any other questions or comments from members of the council on this petition? I don't think any, I didn't see anyone sign up, but any members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? Do not think so. Give Ms. Kent a chance just to double-check. All right. Seeing none, close that public hearing and send that back to the Subcommittee on Public Services for further action this evening. Thank you, Mr. Kazadi. So now we'll go to acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. We have one set of meeting minutes that we can approve this evening. This is for our regular city council meeting on February 18th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve that set of minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries eight zero. Thank you. Ms. Kent, let's go to communications from His Honor, the mayor, please.
Order Number 69, an appointment for Daniel Allen at 24 Pickett Street to serve on the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order Number 70, reappointment for Suzanne Lamont, 20 Porter Street, to serve on the Historic District Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order Number 71, a reappointment for Stanley Mangool to serve as a constable of the city of Beverly.
Please also refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order Number 72, a transfer request of $628,693 from the city's certified free cash to be placed in the Beverly Public Schools operating budget.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set a public hearing.
Order Number 73, a transfer request of $1,071,390 from the city's certified free cash to be placed in the city's stabilization fund, and a second transfer for $214,278 to put into the city's OPEB trust.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. This order will actually require two public hearings, one for each transfer, and so we'll refer Order 73 to Finance and Property to set both of those this evening.
Order Number 74, a transfer request of $800,000 to cover costs associated with the repair and replacement of the city's fuel depot on the DPW campus.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. We'll set a public hearing.
Order Number 75, a donation for $1,000 from Karen and Jay Trepp to benefit the Beverly Public Library.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property as well. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards, please.
Order Number 76, from Beverly School Director of Finance, Emma Buglisi, a request to enter into a lease to purchase a new postage machine. The value of this lease is approximately $5,946.60.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order Number 77, from Councillor Spang, a proposed amendment to downtown parking ordinance for Pleasant Street.
Councillor Spang, anything that you'd like to say about this at this point? All right. Thank you. We'll refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Councillors, I would entertain a motion to take a brief break for some subcommittee work.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries eight zero. Let's have Finance and Property stay here in the chamber, please. Legal Affairs in the committee room and Public Services in the hall. chamber, please. Legal Affairs in the committee room, and Public Services in the hall.
Call to order the Committee on Finance and Property. So, counselors, we have a bunch of public hearings to set tonight, and I think we'll take up the details at the public hearing, so we'll try to get through this efficiently. So I'll take up Order seventy-two. It's a transfer request for six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, six hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars, related to the Beverly Public Schools. So we'll set a public hearing on this matter on March seventeenth at eight fifteen P. M. I'd entertain a motion to do so. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Set. Is set. Next, we'll take up Order seventy-three. This is, we're going to set two public hearings, one for a transfer request for one million seventy-one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars, to be placed in the city's stabilization fund from the free cash balance. Yeah, so on that one, I would set a motion for a public hearing also on March seventeenth, scheduled at seven thirty P. M. So moved.
Second.
Actually, I'm sorry, um, seven forty-five P. M.
I see that, actually, yes.
Yeah. Sorry about that. I amend my motion to set the public hearing at, on March seventeenth at seven forty-five P. M. Thank you, Counselor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is all set. Thank you for that. And then lastly, on this order, we're going to set a public hearing on March seventeenth at seven thirty P. M. To take up the order or the request to transfer two hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars into the OPEB trust fund from the certified free cash balance. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That is also approved, three to zero. Thank you. Okay. So next, we have Order seventy-four. This is a request for eight hundred thousand dollars to cover costs associated with the repair and replacement of the city's fuel depot on the DPW campus. I would entertain a motion that we set a public hearing on this matter on March seventeenth at eight P. M. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved. Uh, okay, so that takes us through our public hearings. We did have one order referred to us tonight. It's a matter of a donation of a thousand dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Trepp, Jay and Karen Trepp, from Beverly Public Library. Order seventy-five. I would entertain a motion that we approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved, three to zero. So, we do have an order, Counselor Sweeney, number twenty-nine, that I would like to get to. I would suggest that we schedule a meeting at six thirty, prior to our next city council meeting. Is that convenient for you?
Thank you.
Uh, so that'd be three seventeen at six thirty. Katie, could we have that room, do you think? Could you? Okay. If not, could we do it here, I guess?
That room is empty.
Okay. Perfect. We'll book it. Yeah, and it'll be for Order twenty-nine. Okay. Anything else, Counselor?
I think Order seventy-six, from the schools.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that one.
The postage machine.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
This is five thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, questions or comments, or would entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve Order Number seventy-six.
It's a postage machine for the schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Anything else tonight? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, subcommittees. I'll call the full council back to order, so that we can finish up our agenda for this evening. And to do that, we will go to reports from committees. Ms. Kent?
Order number seventy-two, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-three from the city's certified free cash to be placed into the Beverly Public Schools' operating budget, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set a public hearing for March seventeenth at eight fifteen P. M.
Counselors, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee, March seventeenth, eight fifteen P. M. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries eight-zero.
Order number seventy-five, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of one million seventy-one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars from the city's certified free cash balance, to be placed into the city's stabilization fund, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set a public hearing on March seventeenth at seven forty-five P. M. And secondly, oops, sorry.
Seconded. I appreciate you just jumping into seconded, Ms. Kent. All those in favor? Carries eight-zero.
Secondly, I request a transfer, I don't request it, a transfer two hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, to set a public hearing for March seventeenth at seven thirty P. M. For the OPEB trust.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries eight-zero.
Order number seventy-four, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of eight hundred thousand dollars to cover costs associated with the repair and replacement of the city's fuel depot on DPW campus, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set a public hearing on March seventeenth at eight P. M.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended, March seventeenth, eight P. M. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries eight-zero.
Order number seventy-five, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of one million seventy-one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars from the city's certified free cash balance, to be placed into the city's stabilization fund, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set a public hearing on March seventeenth at seven forty-five P. M.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee, March seventeenth, seven forty-five P. M.
And secondly, oops, sorry. Seconded.
I appreciate you just jumping into seconded, Ms. Kent. All those in favor? Carries eight-zero.
Secondly, I request a transfer, I don't request it, a transfer two hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, to set a public hearing for March seventeenth at seven thirty P. M. For the OPEB trust.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries eight-zero.
Order number seventy-four, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of eight hundred thousand dollars to cover costs associated with the repair and replacement of the city's fuel depot on DPW campus, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set a public hearing on March seventeenth at eight P. M.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended, March seventeenth, eight P. M. All those in favor? Carries eight-zero as well. Thank you.
Order number seventy-five, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a donation for one thousand dollars from Karen and Jay Trepp to benefit the Beverly Public Library, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? That carries eight-zero, with our thanks to Karen and Jay Trepp for that generous donation to our library.
Order number seventy-six, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a request to enter into a lease to purchase a new postage machine. The value of this lease is approximately five thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty cents. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries eight-zero.
Order number fifty-seven, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a Counselor Spang's request for a public service committee meeting on Charnock Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Refer to park it in traffic with recommendations for discussion.
Thank you. So we'll refer that, send it over, and then when it comes back, we'll be able to have further conversation.
Maybe we can describe some of the...
Counselor Spang?
Yeah, and I can get the language, too, but it was to request their recommendation on adding a stop sign on Charnock Street at Prospect and Knowlton Streets, increasing the one-way signage on Charnock Street, and possibly removing the no-turn on red at the Essex Street, Dane Street intersection, and any other traffic calming measures they may suggest.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Spang, you'll get that language over to the clerk's office. Thank you so much.
Order number sixty-eight, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a petition three one zero five three seven one eight, to install underground facilities on Cabot and Hale Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the petition be granted with request that National Grid coordinate directly with the Fire Department.
Further questions or comments on this one? All right, the question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order with that request attached from the subcommittee. All those in favor? Carries eight-zero. Thank you.
Order number sixty-one, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Amy Henderson to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. So just wanted to thank Ms. Henderson and Ms. Wilworth for being with us. They shared some updates with the committee about the work the Waste Reduction Committee has been doing over the last couple of years. And we talked about scheduling a future Public Services Committee meeting, perhaps jointly posted, to talk through some of the things they see coming down the pipeline, and things that might involve council action later on if they're proposed. All right, stay tuned for that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? That carries eight-zero, with our thanks to Ms. Henderson for her willingness to continue to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee.
Order number sixty-two, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding reappointment for Lisa Wilworth to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries eight-zero, and thanks also to Ms. Wilworth for her willingness to continue to serve, and to both Ms. Henderson and Ms. Wilworth for joining us here this evening. All right. Thank you, Ms. Kent. So that brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. As we just heard, there are multiple public hearings that we set for our next regular meeting, so while this one may have moved quickly, we'll have some important conversation, multiple public hearings for the March seventeenth meeting. Members of the public can, of course, join us here in council chambers to be able to speak in any of those public hearings that might be of interest, or join us live on BevCam if you are watching from home and just want to follow along from your viewing spot. Are there other announcements and reminders from members of the council before we adjourn? Counselor Spang?
Do have one. The National Grid Citizens Advisory Committee about the electric transmission cable line is not meeting in the month of March, so our next meeting will be the first Thursday in April.
Thank you very much, Counselor Spang. I did also want to mention Counselor Housman is not here, but he did, he did want us to remind folks that Legal Affairs, as well as cross-posted with Committee of the Whole, will be meeting on March tenth, that's next Monday, at seven o'clock P. M. That's for a chance for counselors to have question-and-answer session on the specialized code orders that are currently in Legal Affairs. And then Counselor St. Hilaire, Finance and Property will meet before our three seventeen meeting at six thirty P. M. Thank you. Any other announcements from members of the council? All right. Well, I did want to mention Counselor St. Hilaire's birthday is this week, so happy birthday, Counselor St. Hilaire. Hope you get it. Especially not now that you get to go home. You can relax and start celebrating. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Carries eight-zero. Thank you very much. Thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth. Good night, everyone. We're adjourned. Thank you.